Call the meeting to order, please. This is a Village of Riverside's Board of Trustees' regular meeting for Thursday, January 18th, 2018. Hello, New Year. The time is seven o'clock. Please call the roll.
President's House.
Here.
Trustee Hallack.
Here.
Trustee Gisa.
Here.
Trustee Lumsen.
Here.
Trustee Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Sett.
Here.
Trustee Peters.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Morris.
Here.
Also present Village Clerk Haley.
Thank you very much. If you will, please rise.
The Village is certified in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome to everyone who is here with us this evening and that's watching at home. I hope everybody had a nice, safe, and prosperous New Year and holiday season. Everybody looks happy and relaxed. We'll see if we can still remember how to do this up here tonight. For those of you who are here, if you would like to make a comment to the board at any time, I just ask that you be recognized by the President and that you make your comments from the podium so that folks at home can hear and see what you have to say. First up is public comment. Would anyone like to address the board? Hearing none, we'll move on to reports of village officers. First up is my report. Included in the agenda packet this evening is a list of village highlights. At the beginning of last year, the board set forth a series of initiatives that they intended to work on throughout the year of 2017. And what I've done is summarize those in this memorandum. And so, we will have this posted on the village website, so you can take a look. It's a really pleasing report to read. Almost every single initiative that we set out for ourselves in 2017 was accomplished. The only really outstanding one that remains that we will be dealing with this year is the water tower, the repairs of the water tower. And we're going to include that analysis as part of our village-wide facilities study that we are currently doing. So, I encourage you, everyone at home, to take a look and see what the village board and the village staff has accomplished over the last year. Special significance is a schedule of grants that have been received by the village. And in the past five years, our village staff has garnered over $5 million in grants. And every dollar that comes in in grant funding is a dollar of yours that we don't have to spend. So, congratulations to the hard and diligent work of our village staff. And that is all I have. Manager Francis.
I did not have a report this evening.
With the board's permission, I'd like to move up the reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons. We have a guest with us here this evening that Chief Whitezel is going to introduce. And I thought it'd be nice if he didn't have to sit through our meeting. Chief Whitezel?
I'd ask Chief Lehman to come up and stand next to me. Mr. President, trustees, and Manager Francis, before you tonight is an intergovernmental agreement that the District 208 and the Village of Riverside has entered into for a school safety liaison. And behind me, Chief Lane Neiman, recently retired, is going to be assuming that position and that already has. So, myself and the manager thought it'd be a good idea that we invite Lane to come so that the board could see who's going to be over at the high school. And I'll add something before I ask Lane to speak. We're personal friends. We have been for a long time. We were hired about the same time. Probably too long to mention, some 30-plus years ago. But this is a unique opportunity because we were able to partner with 208. And there was, this partnership has been, I would say we've been working on this for about the last six months between the village manager, myself, and the superintendent. And then, when they selected Chief Neiman to be in that position, he joined our discussions on how that position would be formulated. So, he's going to act as the school liaison officer. He is a District 208 employee. But we, the intergovernmental agreement allows him to have some powers through the Village of Riverside for different events that happen at the school, to be armed, although he already has that authority under the Concealed Carry Act for retired police officers. But, he has a direct connection to my department. There isn't a single police officer that doesn't know, Chief. He will have a radio. He already knows how to work the radio after 30 years. He has an office over there. He has a vast background in law enforcement. But, I think a key thing that we should note, is Lane has a vast background with kids, with coaching, with, you know, wrestling, with baseball, with interaction with high school-age kids, even grade-school age kids. And that's really important for that position. So, not only does he carry this law enforcement background, he carries, he came into that position as an educator, in my opinion, already. He came in as a coach already. So, I think this partnership that we're going to be working on and developing will definitely benefit the Village of Riverside, will definitely benefit our residents, and certainly make the school, not only the staff, the students, and the visitors to the school safer. I think they'll have an outlet for somebody to go to that is noncriminal in nature. So, if there's issues that come up at the school that they might need guidance, I think Lane is going to be able to help put that in the right direction. So, that being said, I asked him if he would come up and speak to the board, and if the board had any questions for him, he'd be happy to answer them. So, thanks, Chief.
Thanks. First of all, I want to thank Chief Whitezel, obviously a very elegant speaker there, and he kind of said some nice things about me. We did start together way back in 1985, so I did hire two of his kids, so he better say nice things about me. But, we do have a long, outstanding partnership, not only between Tom and myself, but between North Riverside and Riverside Police. I can't remember how many times that we counted on your police officers to come and assist us. And hopefully, we reciprocated and did the same when you guys needed us. The working relationship between the two departments is something that I'm very proud of, and I know Chief Whitezel is too. I just want to continue that same type of thing with the school. Anytime you can have more information there, having a radio there, if something did happen, I would be able to communicate, and you're going to get firsthand information. You're not going to get something from a dispatcher or something like that. I'll be able to get on the radio and tell them exactly where it's at, what's going on, from a law enforcement person to another law enforcement person. I think that's really important, I really do. I can't see any negative sides. I've been there, I went last week, so I've been there for eight days, getting to know the staff, the students, and those, you know, just getting a feel for the school. I feel they do a great job. They got a lot of things on, you know, that they're very prepared for, and they obviously do a great job with their students, preparing them for college. But, this will give us just a little bit more enhancement as far as communications, you know, not only with Riverside, but we also are with our new WC3 center that Mrs. Francis was very instrumental in getting that off the road, you know, with Brookfield, Riverside, North Riverside, all being in the same, you know, dispatch center, working even closer together. I think this is, just extends the information and the type of working relationship will just be enhanced by having somebody there giving firsthand knowledge. Like I says, I know I'm accountable, even though I'm a District 208 employee, I know I'm accountable for what goes on there. And Chief Whitezel knows that if there's ever a problem, he can call me, call me in, just like a principal would, wants to know what's going on. He has that authority, and he will maintain that. So, if you have any questions whatsoever, I'd be happy to answer what I can answer.
Trustees?
What do you wear? Do you wear a uniform, or?
Right now, I wear a polo shirt and, like, with, it says SLO on there for a school liaison officer, and it has a star on there right now. But, we're working on, I just, everything I do, I want to make sure that Riverside's comfortable, Brookfield's comfortable, North Riverside's comfortable, and we come up with some type of working relationship, that everything we do, that everybody's comfortable with.
Yes. Well, welcome. I think this is, it's a great idea that we're doing this, and it just continues a really, really good working relationship that we have with North Riverside, probably the best relationship with our two communities it's had, has had since I can remember. So, welcome, and keep us safe, and you stay safe.
Thank you, President's House. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I wanted to also mention, Lane's wife is here tonight. I did not want her to go, so he, I wanted to make sure that the board know that. So, if there isn't any other questions, I thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Whitezel. Okay, we'll go back to the agenda now, and in case you've forgotten, since last year, I am required to read the consent agenda. So, here we go. Ratify voucher list of bills for December 21, 2017. Voucher list of bills, January 4th, 2018. Voucher list of bills, January 18th, 2018. Approve the village board trustee regular meeting minutes of December 7, 2017. File and review the following. Economic Development Commission meeting minutes of September 14, 2017. Historical Commission meeting minutes, October 16, 2017. Landscape Advisory Commission special meeting minutes, October 17, 2017. Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes of August 23, 2017. Preservation Commission meeting minutes, October 12 and November 21, 2017. The Community Development Department monthly reports of November and December 2017. Fire Department monthly reports, November and December 2017. Police Department monthly reports, November and December 2017. A resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a contract in the amount of $49,500 with D. Ryan Tree and Landscape for 2018 cyclic trees trimming. A resolution authorizing the village manager to create a purchase order in the amount of $32,000 for the removal of Emerald Ash Borer infested trees by D. Ryan Tree and Landscape. A resolution authorizing the village manager to waive competitive bidding and execute an agreement with FH Passion in the amount of $56,879.85 to modify the existing police and fire department lobby for consolidated dispatching purposes. A resolution, a resolution authorizing the village manager to waive competitive bidding and execute a sales agreement with RZA Ford for an amount not to exceed $37,043 for the purchase of one 2018 Ford police utility vehicle, and a sales agreement with Jack Phelan Chevrolet for the purchase of a 2018 Chevrolet Tahoe police package vehicle not to exceed $26,436 for a total cost of $63,479 for the two vehicles. Almost done. A resolution waiving competitive bidding and awarding an at-risk construction management contract to FH Passion for the historic Train Depot interior repairs for a total cost of $56,476.59. A resolution authorizing the sale or disposal of personal property owned by the Village of Riverside. A resolution approving an amendment to the Village of Riverside's cafeteria plan. A resolution approving and adopting an updated harassment policy, including sexual harassment, to conform to Illinois Public Act 100-0554. Resolution authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Riverside and Riverside Brookfield Township High School 208 that provides for a Village of Riverside auxiliary officer to serve Riverside Brookfield Township High School 208. And lastly, a resolution approving a fourth amendment to employment agreement for the village manager. Are there any items that any trustee needs to have removed for discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve. Motion by Mr. Gisa. Second by Mr. Ballerine. Please call the roll.
Trustee Hallack.
Aye.
Trustee Gisa.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsen.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Sett.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Motion carries. Moving on now to ordinances and resolutions. First up, an ordinance to provide for nonparticipation of the Village of Riverside in certain assessment relief provided by the Property Tax Code for historic buildings and for certain resident structures located within the Riverside Landscape Architectural District. Director Apt.
As you may recall, last month, last year, we discussed the tax assessment freeze program. And at that meeting, we discussed the Preservation Commission's recommendation on participating in that program moving forward. Some of the board members had expressed some concerns that with the number of eligible structures that we have in town, that a large number of property owners could take advantage of the program, and that that participation could have an unfair tax impact on the rest of the property owners in town. So, you asked us to look into a kind of what that financial impact could be. So, we worked with our GIS consultant to merge the county data that we had for 2016 to come up with this information. So, based on the program requirements, the number of eligible structures is 2,118, approximately. We were able to identify each of them utilizing the county's information, the actual EAV for each of those structures. So, this would be working with the 2016 numbers because the 2017 numbers aren't available. Additionally, based on your feedback and the IHPA presentation that they had provided us, we assumed a 4% participation rate because that is what they were seeing in the other historic districts, kind of on average. So, we used, we used that number, and that's what you had asked us to. We also included a half a percent participation rate. In discussing with the Preservation Commission, they felt that the likelihood that 4% of our structures are actually going to participate in this was relatively low. And IHPA had given us additional information in their presentation that showed that the participating structures, participating properties in this program related to their total housing stock. And since our entire village is basically within the landscape district, we thought that was a reasonable number to look at as well. And that is about 0.4 to 0.5 of a percent of their total housing stocks in Oak Park, which was one example that they gave us, and the other was Geneva. So, we have those two numbers, we put together in a table for you. So, assuming 4% participation, you're looking at approximately 85 properties participating. That would be an estimated frozen EAV of 2,772,646, which accounts for about 1.04% of our total EAV frozen, which equals out to a little over $54,000 of our tax levy being frozen. And when you kind of break that out or parse that out, that equals about $20.36 per $100,000 of EAV that the rest of the property owners in town would be taking on. So, spread out across the village. And that's just our village share. So, just to be clear, I'm not looking at the person's total tax bill. This is just the Village of Riverside's property tax levy. If we have a half a percentage of people participating, that would be about 11 properties, with 346,581 being the frozen EAV, which accounts for 0.13%, or about $6,700 of frozen tax levy, which would be about $2.54 per $100,000 of EAV for the remainder to recoup. So, just to note that the eligible expenses for this program have to be at least 25% of the assessor's fair market value of the property. That's the house and the land. And it cannot include costs of construction that are outside of the existing building. So, if somebody's doing a second-story addition, or a two-story addition on the back, or a detached garage, or something along those lines, those costs aren't eligible costs for this program, just so there's a little bit more clarification on that. In addition, the project must meet the Secretary of Interior's standards for rehabilitation, which does demand that significant historic spaces and elements be retained while non-significant spaces and elements may be changed. And that applies to the interior as well. So, certain things such as, like, built-in cabinetry, or trim, things like that, or stuff that they're looking to be preserved with any sort of rehab, in addition to, like, windows, roofing, siding, things like that, that you would expect on the exterior of a home. So, typically, the village at this time of year adopts an ordinance or resolution that opts out of this particular program. So, based on the Preservation Commission's recommendation and the information you've been provided, you can either make a motion to concur with the Preservation Commission's recommendation to participate in the property tax assessment freeze program, or if you disagree with their recommendation, you can make a motion to approve an ordinance to provide for the nonparticipation, and you have that ordinance before you this evening.
So, since we have an option here, why don't we have our discussion first, and then we can decide if somebody wants to make a motion one way or the other? Does anybody have any questions for Director Apt first?
I do have a couple of questions. The, remind me, the, the EAV is frozen for all the taxing bodies, or is it just the Village of Riverside that subsidizes this type of program?
I believe we are the only taxing body that is currently opting out of this program, so...
No, I mean, I mean, what, the schools, is, is the EAV frozen?
If somebody opts into this program, the EAV is frozen for all of the taxing bodies.
For all the taxing bodies?
Unless they specifically opt out of this program.
Got it. So, the numbers you quoted here, per $100,000 in market value, is that just the village portion?
Yes, that's, the village's tax levy.
Okay, so, I think then what you're saying...
I mean, the EAV, all the taxing bodies get that EAV number from the assessor's office, and then their levy is based off of that EAV.
Well, okay, then, I hope I'm wrong here, but assuming 4% do utilize this, it's $55 per $100,000 of market value, say an average market value of $300,000, it's going to cost a homeowner $165 to the village, but the village is only about 12% of your tax bill.
Correct, we are only one portion of it.
So, you're telling me if, if, if we, if we do this, actually, we will be subsidizing over $1,000 for an average house?
It could be.
At 4%?
If we have, if we have that level of participation.
At 4%?
Yeah.
So, I'm trying, so, it would have been nice to see these in terms of your total tax bill, not just the village's portion of the tax bill, but basically, you can multiply these by six, really. So, so, yeah, at a half percent, you're talking, you're still talking, you know, $500 potentially of subsidy.
Could be. I'm not as familiar with what the total tax rate is for all of the taxing bodies together, but that sounds like it could be about right.
Are you following me? What, yeah?
And just, just to follow up on that, I mean, that, that really's been the primary reason in the past that the village has opted out of this. Because the thought was that these kind of projects, you know, is it, is it really fair for the village overall to subsidize the renovation of these, these kinds of homes?
Well, and yet, the other problem is, is we have a lot more homes than that, because other, other communities have historic history. We have many, many more homes that fall into that, to that realm than...
Well, if you, on the aggregate, I guess you could say that, yes. I think if you look, I think our numbers were fairly comparable to, if you look at Oak Park and their historic districts, their number of housing stock in those districts compared to our village district was cut here.
Comments from this side of the room? If not, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'd make a motion that we opt out.
It's a motion by Mr. Ballerine to opt out. Need a second?
I'll second it.
Second. By Mr. Lumsen, any further discussion? Please call the roll, and so, I'm going to read the actual, I think everybody knows what we're talking about, but for the record...
Well, this is for the ordinance, correct?
Yes. So, the motion is, a motion to approve an ordinance to provide for nonparticipation of the Village of Riverside in certain assessment relief provided by the Property Tax Code for historic buildings and for certain resident structures located within the Riverside Landscape Architectural District. That's exactly what you said, right, Mr. Ballerine? Yes? And that was what the second was. Okay.
Opting out of it.
Yes.
So, a yes.
So, a yes is to opt out.
To stay the way we've been.
Exactly. Please call the roll.
Trustee Hallack.
Yes.
Trustee Gisa.
Yes.
Trustee Lumsen.
Yes.
Trustee Ballerine.
Yes.
Trustee Sett.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. With that, we'll move on now to our next item of business, which is an ordinance approving a special use permit to expand an existing special use for a church and associated variations to allow a church office addition at 97 Herrick Road, Riverside, St. Mary Parish.
So, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the proposed special use for an expansion of the special use for the church and its associated variations at their meeting on December 19th. They did recommend approval of the special use and the variation for parking, and they also recommended approval with a condition for the variation on the impervious surfaces. The project involves a small, one-story addition on the east side, let me turn this on real quick, on the east side of the gym here at St. Mary's. So, this area right here is where the addition would be going. It's about a 2,700 square foot addition, and based on their zoning and the existing conditions on the lot, the church and school and the parking lots altogether exceed the maximum impervious surface ratio of 50% for the R1A district. And, so, the addition, they would still continue to exceed that amount. And so, in order to be able to build the addition, they require a variance from those impervious surface standards to be able to do the addition. In net, it is increasing, originally was increasing the impervious numbers by about 12 square feet. In addition, they don't meet their parking requirement, and with the additional office space, that would increase the parking requirement, they're requesting variance in order to not have to provide that additional parking in order to meet the parking requirement for the combination of uses of the school as well as the church. So, right now, their offices are located across the street, up here, at the rectory, and there is parking there. They are looking to move those offices onto the campus itself, and then obviously, the associated employees would be parking here. The Planning and Zoning Commission did discuss that. The petitioners explained that parking lot is not completely used on weekdays during the day, so there is room in the parking lot to be able to accommodate the office workers, you know, in that parking. They don't feel the need that additional parking is really demanded by the uses that are there, so they would rather not add the parking if they don't have to. One of the commission's concerns was the impervious surface, though, and they felt that that really needed to be mitigated more than it was. And so, in their recommendation of approval on that particular variance, they did ask that they come back with a plan for you on mitigating up to at least 50% of that additional impervious surface that they were adding. So, you have in your packet a revised plan that the architect provided us for you this evening, and they are proposing to remove some impervious area in a couple of areas. And they also provided a chart, I think you guys got a copy of that as well, that kind of breaks down the impervious coverage. But what they're proposing to remove is part of this walkway here from Herrick down to the former entrance of the school, so that would be reduced. And then, they're also looking at eliminating this connection here between the church entrance and another entrance into the school, so that sidewalk would be removed. And then, they are looking at adding an actual landscape island here, rather than it just being a striped area on the pavement, to try to provide some permeable area in the parking lot as well. These changes do offset now the number that they are adding with the addition. So, they have basically negated the need for the variance at this point with, with this proposal before you. So, they're here to answer any other questions you have, but you do have the recommendations from the planning commission before you, their findings of fact, as well as an ordinance that would adopt or approve the special use that they need in order to be able to expand the church and the two variances. It can be amended if needed so that it doesn't include the variance for the impervious surface on there that's not required, and we're okay with their proposed plan here with the removals of those couple of areas of sidewalk.
Okay, so, before we start a discussion, I ask for a motion to approve an ordinance approving a special use to expand an existing special use for a church in the R1A and R4 zoning districts and associated variations from the Riverside zoning ordinance for the property at 97 Herrick Road, St. Mary Parish. Motion by Mr. Lumsen.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gisa. Discussion, questions?
You know, I have one question. As I was reading it, they're using, if, 62.5% after this building is built, give or take, half of the, half of the property, or part of the properties are one, part of the properties are four.
Correct.
I know there was a brief discussion at the planning and zoning that if they, if we change the zoning of the whole campus to be R4, then it would be 65% impervious, and then they wouldn't have to deal with tearing out all those sidewalks and the associated costs that go with that, as well as give them some leeway in the future to do other improvements around the campus, that, who knows what it could be. It was talked about briefly, but I don't know if it got any traction, I just wanted to, it just seems like that would be the easiest thing to do, is just change the zoning on that property, but I know I tend to be too simplistic in my thoughts.
Well, in some ways, it would eliminate that, that concern that you've had with the two different zoning districts. It kind of makes it more of a cohesive, you know, cohesive zoning lot. However, in the residential districts, the parking requirement, R1 or R4, would still be the same, and the uses of a church or a school are still special uses within any residential zoning districts. So, it wouldn't negate the need for a special use in the future, should they want to do another expansion. So, it wouldn't negate the need for a special use in the future, should they want to do another expansion, and it would not take away from the parking requirements, because they would again not be needing their, their parking requirement if they were adding additional classrooms, or, you know, additional office space, or additional, you know, if they were expanding the church. Those requirements just continue to go up.
I'm not worried about this parking or the special use, I mean, the Village of Riverside uses that parking lot more than the church uses that parking lot. So I'm not worried about the parking or, or, I'm worried about the impervious surface space. Let's just say they needed to expand a sidewalk to work with ADA requirements, or do something else, or they're going to, then they're, they're going to be back here at the same issue with the impervious versus, you know, the impervious surface area. Could we just not, could we just take care of that issue by just making it R-four, so they have a certain percentage left to work with?
I mean, if that's something that the board would want to pursue, that's something that we can certainly discuss. From a timing perspective, that is still additional hearings and things that need to happen. Additionally, you do need to consider the development pattern, speaking from sort of the land use zoning perspective. The development pattern on Herrick is single-family homes in that area, and should, for some reason, this church be shut down fifty years from now, or, you know, whatever the case may be, this land opens up for redevelopment. The development pattern and the zoning out there is for single-family homes. R-four zoning is for multifamily and office. So it doesn't necessarily fit the existing development pattern out there, so that is something to be considered in the rezoning process, is that, that this is now the zoning on there, and is what their expected development potential is for that moving forward. So, you know, if, for some reason, the church does close, and they want to sell the property, redevelop the property, we can't just come back and say, hey, we wanted to go back to single-family.
Why not?
You have to go through the process again, and, and they would have a legal standing saying, you're taking away some of my, my property rights, because they were rightfully now zoned to R-four, and now we're choosing to try and take that away from them and downzone them.
And that would change the value of the development opportunity.
It does change the value, so, so they would have, they would have some standing in saying how, you know, if, if they were not amenable to that particular change, that they would have standing, standing and contesting that, that rezoning.
But to be, to be clear, I watched, I watched the meeting, and they were, they were asked to, to make these adjustments at the request of the zoning committee, and they did it.
Well.
They accomplished what they were doing, and, and more, right?
Right.
So an additional five hundred square feet, so they, I mean, based on what I'm seeing and reading, they did exactly what was asked them to do.
Yes, they did.
Can, can the change of zoning come with a covenant that switches it back with transfer property? Is there something legal that could be done?
They would have to voluntarily want to add that kind of caveat, because conditions on rezoning don't normally go along the same way that you could put them on special use.
Plus, they probably want to set the project, so I mean.
Well, I mean, we can let them set the project, that's not, we can do this on our own time.
I think my, my view on this is, this village has a, a very serious water problem, and I can't support anything that's going to make it worse. So I think just, just doing this doesn't address the issue that's underlying. I think that the church has come up with a great solution, and I really appreciate the creativity. I, I know it's a bit of a hardship, I don't think it's an overwhelming hardship for you to accomplish this, and I think we should thank them for doing it and move on.
So, yes, Mr. Mars?
To Trustee Ballerine's point, that one option is to, if, if you go ahead and approve this, you talked about their possible future needs for ADA compliance or, or additional impervious surface. At that time, they could come back with, you know, concurrent applications for, for a zoning amendment or an additional variance, and then the board would have a choice at that point to, to, to work a permanent solution or to give another variance.
So another, other thought that I had as I watched the meeting, the parking requirements for the church, in my view, are, are unrealistic, because the, if there, there's a, and, and Director App can explain this better than I, but if you have a strip mall, and you have multiple different businesses in a strip mall, it makes sense to accumulate the various parking needs for the given businesses, because it's conceivable that all those businesses could be busy at once. But what we're doing with the church is, we're adding together the requirements for the worship space, the gymnasium, the office space, which is, which are never all used at the same time. So, it, it creates an artificially high requirement for parking. So, one thought that I had would be, and the Planning and Zoning Commission could do this in conjunction with the parish, is figure out which one of those components could conceivably generate the highest need for parking, and let that then become the required number of parking spaces, instead of having the hundred and, what, hundred and thirty-eight or something like that, that it calculates out to now. So, if, you know, if that number could be realistically and fairly reduced, that opens up possibilities that they could do in terms of meeting the impervious surface requirement, without having to do some of it.
That would require them.
They could eliminate three or four parking spots.
Right, and I guess maybe that's a question for the church, would they rather take out the sidewalks or reduce the size of your parking lot and remove impervious surface in the parking lot?
But, but the, but the overriding reason I'm suggesting that this is, it just doesn't make any sense to add them all up.
Which I agree, but the parking, the parking lot spaces, the problem is, the parking, the spaces, I, in some ways, are a liability to the church, but they're an asset to the village. We don't want to lose those spaces. Like I say, we use those probably more than they use them. I mean, I was there Monday night, every space in that parking lot was, was full, and I wasn't at the church. So, I mean, there, there, there's a lot of, that, that.
Well, that would be up to them.
Yeah.
I always would have a move to make some of the parking, previous parking, too, technology we have available today, right?
And it also could be an opportunity to consider a redesign. And there's a lot of, I've actually learned a lot more about parking than I ever wanted to learn as a result of this, but there are some very creative and kind of cutting-edge ways to design parking lots now that might make, be more efficient. So, in any event, that is something that I think we should look at fixing. I mean, as, not, that's, it wouldn't hold up what we're trying to do tonight, but I think that that would be something that we could ask PZC to take under advisement, go back to us on. Any other comments, questions? Call the roll, Mr. Mars?
Before we call the roll, so the ordinance was drafted with both variations included. So, to the extent that the board is embracing the church's revised plan that negates the need for one of those variations, if we could amend the motion so that the very, the ordinance will be, only reflect the one variation being granted.
Is that acceptable to you, Mr. Jisa? And who was the second? Kathy, who was the second on the motion?
It was Scott.
Are you the second? Are you, you made the motion? Okay, there are, okay, okay, now I'll call the roll.
All right. Trustee Hallack.
Aye.
Trustee Gisa.
Aye.
Trustee Lumston.
Aye.
Trustee Valerie.
Aye.
Trustee Sev.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Next up is a resolution approving an amendment to the facade improvement program within the Village of Riverside Central Business District.
Yes, back in twenty-sixteen, we adopted our facade improvement program, and back in the spring, we had not received any applications yet for the grant, so we recommended some changes at that point, and those were adopted in May. Those amendments included allowing for the applicants to provide only one quote for the project and reducing the minimum project cost to five hundred dollars. In November, the Economic Development Commission, based on the fact that we'd only had two applications for the grant program at that time, recommended that the village board consider allowing rear facades that face the railroad right-of-way to be eligible for the grant program as well. That would require an amendment to our, our program and our policy. The EDC considered a small number of businesses that had applied, and thought that including the rear facades may encourage more businesses to apply. Additionally, the village received a grant application for a tenant that's in a building that has some active property maintenance violations and zoning code violations that are not related specifically to that tenant, but rather the landlord and the property as a whole. Our grant program policy, as it currently written, says that no person who is in violation of the village's building code, including the property maintenance code, may be eligible to participate in the program. And it also says that if a property or unit is in violation of the zoning or sign ordinances, the applicant will not be eligible to participate until the nonconformity has been removed, unless the proposed project will bring that property into compliance with the zoning or sign codes. In interpreting this policy, staff believes there could be some discrepancy in implementation on whether a tenant would be eligible if it's the landlord's property that's in violation of the codes, regardless of whether the tenant's base is, you know, directly responsible for any of those violations. So, staff would like the policy and associated grant application to clearly define those parameters to ensure the proper implementation of this grant program moving forward. To address the issue, staff is proposing an amendment that would clarify that tenants of properties with landlords in violation of the zoning sign or building code are eligible for the grant program, provided that their unit does not have any violations or where the eligible project would correct a violation on their unit, such as replacing a non-conforming sign with a conforming sign. This clarification will also ensure that the program does not unduly penalize tenants for issues that are outside of their control. You have a copy of the proposed amendments attached to this, and there's a resolution adopting the new policy with those amendments in it. So this, again, this program only applies to our central business district at this time. We did approve it as part of the budget for twenty-eighteen, so I believe we have fifteen-thousand-dollar budget for applications for twenty-eighteen. As I said, I do have one application that has been submitted, that is awaiting review based on clarification of this policy, and I do have a couple of other businesses that have expressed some interest in the program, so.
So I'd ask for a motion to approve an ordinance amending the facade improvement program within the Village of Riverside Central Business District.
So moved.
By Ms. Peters? Second, by Ms. Sev. Comments, discussion?
So, the changes that we're contemplating making here is allowing a business owner that is in a business, it's a business owner that is renting in a building, and the building itself has code violations, but that building, that, that renter is in compliance, he can then make improvements, and we are willing to pay half of it.
For eligible improvements, yes.
I'm one hundred percent against us giving any money to do any improvements on any building that's out of, that's, that's a code violation, unless it's a sign, and it's a removable sign. If, if one of the pre-hop wants to change their sign, or, so, any of the businesses want to change their signs from the box signs to, to a sign that's appropriate, that's, that, I consider that their property, because that's their sign. And when they leave, they would take that with them.
Correct.
I have no problem doing that.
Okay.
But I'm not going to replace windows in the building, doors in the building, interior, whatever you could, you could think of. But if it, if it solves our sign issue, I'm a hundred percent for it.
Okay.
That makes sense, because it benefits the business that's not in violation, and doesn't incentivize a building owner that's remaining non-compliant with some.
Putting new windows in his business.
Mr. Ball?
I, I tend to agree with Trustee Ballerine. I also think that this just raises issues, I mean.
It's a new year.
But, but what happens if a tenant in a building, and there's a common trash dumpster that's not screened, but it's not directly behind this one tenant's building, tenant's base, it's down the way a little bit, but every tenant uses it, does that make that tenant eligible or not eligible?
I'm trying to write us that, that the tenant would be eligible. Since it is, it's for the whole property, it's not necessarily specifically for their tenant.
It's more of a rhetorical question.
But that wouldn't be a facade improvement.
No, but it is a code violation.
It'd be a code violation.
So are they eligible based on that violation?
I'm just trying to make the point that I think that it becomes difficult to draw that line at times, but even, even if we could draw the line, I, I agree with Trustee Ballerine that if, if we're investing taxpayers' dollars into a building that benefits the landlord, may benefit the tenant as well, that landlord should have their building in compliance.
Mr. Mars, not to put you on the spot, do you have thought of how we can accomplish what Mr. Ballerine is describing?
I'm looking at the language now, I, we, we can certainly do it, I haven't figured.
Can I ask you one thing? So, so, so with regard to businesses that are renting buildings or code violation, I agree with the fact that signage or an awning, something that is more aesthetically pleasing, but, but I also, and I, windows, doors, I, I get that, but I also think that helping them actually improve the facade, which is called a facade improvement, I mean, giving them some ability to improve the facade itself, with, with whether it's siding, or something that will make it more aesthetically pleasing, might help some of these businesses be more successful. And I think it'll increase the, the, the aesthetic design of the central business, business district itself. It's something I wanted to kind of think about. I get what we're doing, but, but trying to help businesses be more attracted to people and, and the residents to walk down their street and be proud of it is also something we should take into consideration. Or I would.
So, I mean, how many, how many businesses, or how many landlords are in noncompliant status right now that this would impact? Are we talking two buildings with ten tenants, or are we talking ten buildings with ten tenants? The fact that you know that by memory worries me, but.
I'd say we have maybe four or five buildings that are not in compliance in, in some way, shape, or form, whether it be because their dumpsters are not enclosed, or because they have some bigger issue, property maintenance issues.
And we're working, you guys continue to work with those folks to try and get compliance.
Yeah, you know, and I, I know, I understand that certain things are a significant investment, and it can be difficult for property owners to work that into their budget, so we've been trying to work with the different businesses and property owners over the past couple of years on trying to bring things into compliance, you know, such as screening the dumpster enclosures, and it's.
Here's another question, have you talked to any of the interested parties, the business owners? I mean, have they spoken to their landlords to determine whether or not it's even an option?
Part of the requirement is that they do have to have approval for their landlord, for them to be able to do the project and apply for the grant, so it's not necessarily like the money's going to the landlord, but we want to make sure that the landlord is aware that they're looking to do improvements on the property. We don't want to enter into an agreement and then have a landlord say, hey, I'm not okay with them doing this type of sign, or I'm not okay with them replacing the windows, so we want to make sure that there's at least a discussion happening between the tenant and the landlord before we enter into the agreement.
And do we have anything in there also, some sort of a hook, that with regard to the term of the lease that they've got? So they're protected, if they do invest, if they do pay fifty percent, that they're invested on getting a return on the investment?
And the program is written that if they, I want to say, it's either three or five years if their business closes, or they move locations, that they do have to pay back.
No, but I'm talking about protecting themselves from a landlord that's, that's noncompliant. So, so the lease, where they're locked into a lease, I mean, if it's a month-to-month lease, and they spend five thousand dollars to throw up a sign, and they can be thrown out two months later.
Yeah, we don't, you know, we don't really do any lease review, we just.
Or five thousand dollars to change the windows that we just paid half of it for, and then it's a tenant, yeah. Yeah, and now there's new windows in the building, that's more what I worry about.
Yeah.
I, I, I understand your point, Trustee Gisa, but I, I think as written, this ordinance gives landlords a lot of leverage to force costs onto their tenants and potentially taxpayers that they otherwise probably should absorb themselves. So I am concerned about.
Yeah, if you go to the eligible portions, we could carve out the eligible portions that have the caveat, the eligible portions that don't, like signage, we would define exterior lighting, we'd probably define it in conjunction with the sign. Windows and door replacements, that's more of a building function, so you can almost draw a line and say, okay, we could show some compassion above the line until the, until the landlord becomes compliant, and then there's more building investment that would be below the line, and they'd have to be in compliance status.
But, but that's my point, so I'm making it more around the design of the facade versus the functionality of the doors and the windows. He's throwing up a sign on a crappy facade, isn't going to do any good for the downtown business district, right? I mean, it's not going to change the way a facade looks.
If, if, if a, if a business were to replace a box sign with an awning.
If a business were to replace a box sign with an awning, who owns the awning? The business owner or the building owner?
That's probably between the landlord and the tenants.
Probably between the landlord and the tenants. Typically, like in our sign application, we ask who is going to be the responsible party for maintaining it, because that is typically a point of, that's brought up in leases, so just so we're aware who we should be citing if there's issues with sign maintenance. And typically, it is the tenant that's responsible for signage. If you're going to be putting signage on an awning, I think that would typically end up being under the tenant's responsibilities.
Well, but really.
If it's bolted, fixed, and wired, it tends to be part of the.
But Mr. Mars, could we approach it in terms of ownership?
We could.
So if the awning is going to be owned by the business owner, not the building owner, then it would be eligible. So maybe that's a way to approach it instead of, that really gets to what Trustee Ballerine's trying to get at, is who is accruing the benefit? Does that sound like a plausible way of going at it?
I think at the end of the day, too, if it doesn't meet these requirements, Sony could bring it to the board, and we could make an individual judgment based on the circumstances, too.
That's true.
Can I ask you what application you have? Is that offered as in this form? Is it a sign, or is it?
It's to replace a box sign and put on an awning with signage on the awning.
Which is something new.
On the lift, you can't put it on the exit awning, right? You can only put it on the lift of the awning, you can't put it on the exit awning, can you?
You can't put it on the, on the fence, but you aren't, you know, there's limitations on that.
Let me ask this, it seems to me that we have unanimity on what we want to do, right? So can we just leave it up to Attorney Mars to figure it out? And we can go and proceed that way, Sony can take action on this application? Is that okay with everybody?
Are we okay with awnings, then? So long as it has signage on it?
Yeah, as long as the owner has signage, because it's their sign.
They pay for it.
They should own it, yeah.
So you're, to get it right, what they're trying to do.
And everyone's okay with the railroad runway change, correct?
I think that's fine with everybody. With that caveat, please call the board.
Trustee Ballerine. Trustee Gisa.
Hi.
Trustee Lomston.
Hi.
Trustee Ballerine.
Hi.
Trustee Sevigny.
Hi.
Trustee Peters.
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you for your answer. Next up is a discussion of the Metro Intersection Improvement Project Plans, and we have with us this evening our village engineer, Ryan Gailey, who's going to walk us through the current status of the plan. Welcome back, Mr. Gailey.
Thank you, good to be here. Tonight, we're going to talk about the metro station pedestrian access improvements. I'll first give a little brief background as far as how we got to this point. Back in 2013, CMAC recommended shortening the crosswalk that is just south of the railroad tracks at Berry Point adjacent to the train station, and they also recommended that we add another east-west crosswalk along the south side of Quincy. Then in 2016, the village staff requested that Burke Engineering investigate some alternatives to the intersection, and at that point in time, we did come up with some concept plans for reducing that, as well as getting rid of some of that excess asphalt space that you have there, and increasing some pedestrian space in that area. In 2017, village staff, as well as Burke, as part of our meetings with Metro for the ADA platform improvements, also shared this design with Metro and got some of their input incorporated into the plan. And then in 2017, KLOA Traffic did a traffic study and recommended this concept plan as well as adding a stop sign at Burling Road with the new east-west crosswalk there, as well as shifting the crosswalk here in front of Village Hall. So with that, we came up with an initial concept plan at that time, and as you can see here, right now, you can turn basically right through here. So we've widened this pedestrian area with a curb and gutter all the way to here, so you now have, instead of this long crosswalk, a very short crosswalk here. We've also included some bump outs and shortened crosswalks in various different areas, as well as added this crosswalk here that'll be a stop sign intersection right here. Moving forward from there, we were tasked with looking for some funding opportunities. In early 2017, the village applied for two different grants, one Invest and Cook, and another through CMAC. Unfortunately, neither of those were selected for funding, but in August of 2017, we applied for some STP funds as a transportation control measure project. Due to grant restrictions, they only approved that we would be able to fund the portion north of Quincy, but the village did receive $346,000 and some change to fund 70% of that construction. And then also in December of 2017, the village has just recently applied for an ITEP grant, which would take care of the rest of that portion to the south of Quincy, as well as Quincy Street itself through the CBD. And we're expecting that award notification to be in the spring of this year. Specifically, what I want to discuss with the board this evening is what we've already been approved, which is this portion here north of Quincy. And between that plan and now, we've also had a kickoff meeting with IDOT, which we subsequently started the Phase One engineering and got some more feedback from IDOT as part of that, as well as, we're already through Phase One engineering, so we're ready to start construction here shortly. As a matter of fact, we're planning on submitting plans to IDOT, the pre-final plans, in February, which would put this on in August letting, where we would be starting this work in September and being complete this year. Then in December of last year, we met with the Preservation Commission, and they also gave us some recommendations that we also incorporated in the plan. So our current concept plan for the work that we have funding for right now includes, again, this large pedestrian area up here, shortened crosswalk, a new sidewalk going through this triangle. We've changed the geometrics a little bit to have it more curved than having angles in there. We've also shown some streetscaping along the east side of the street, adding some trees and tree grates. Right here, this would be a raised limestone planter, similar to what we have on East Burlington now. Also some at-grade plantings, and then through here, we would be adding some bike racks and some more plantings. We also added on some additional pedestrian pavement area through here, and are including, right now, a sidewalk extension here for the potential memorial work that'll be taking place in the park there. One thing to note is currently, there are five parking spaces here, and four parking spaces here that will all be gone. We are adding some perpendicular parking here that will increase the parking, but we are in net of minus three on the parking here. But I think the overall benefits that we'll have for pedestrian safety and access outweighs that. So at this point in time, we'd be happy to answer any questions or concerns that the board may have.
Just that last thing that you mentioned about the diagonal parking? I thought, somewhere in my memory, I thought that if we used federal funding, that you weren't allowed to use diagonal parking. Didn't we have that issue on Burlington?
The reason for that was we didn't have enough space. So the distance.
It's really, it's not just a blanket, no diagonal. And you don't foresee any potential safety issues with diagonal parking?
No, we have plenty of room for this through lane here to it not being an issue.
Down the way, that stretch, you had to change the parking?
Down here?
Down this way. On the other side, just.
Here?
Keep going. Right there. Toward that new sidewalk.
Where they're no longer parallel, they're, aren't you picking up quite a bit of parking spaces there?
We are, yeah. So that's offsetting, we're losing nine parking spaces here, picking up three here, and three additional parking spaces here for a net of minus three.
And we're not, but those won't be picked up here? It seems like they would be, see what I'm talking about?
Yeah, it's just not picking up all of them, it's picking up a good chunk of it, but.
We're picking up three additional spaces here, and three additional spaces here.
And getting three extra here.
Why don't you do a diagonal where those three additional are? This is a safety concern back and forth at the turn.
Right here? This was mainly a concern of Metro's, that they want to keep some sort of kiss and ride, pickup, drop off through there.
The buses and stuff.
I think as far as the parking goes, too, even though we're losing spaces, rarely do people actually park there. You're not confident you can park there.
Right, and a few of these spots, I'm not sure exactly how many, were dedicated for the guy who was to be in there, right, so.
Now, are you pushing it out far enough to make that turn where we no longer have the cars stacking up that?
Through the railroad?
Yeah.
I mean, it depends on.
Who's driving.
The time of day and who's driving, but you're.
It's good and healthy.
It's certainly healthy, you're going to be able to get another two or three cars through there.
What I really like about this is you have to keep going straight south for a period of time, and you can actually have a chance to sit pedestrians before they're in the crosswalk, right, you know, standing next to your mirror.
Right, and we did move the crosswalk from basically right in the road to a little further away.
I do have one question. So I was hit by UPS truck at this turn, 12 years old at this turn. This is good, this is great for me. But on the right there where the crosswalk is, where the right turn is, do you have a planter there? Is that going to be a vision, a vision, I mean, is that going to be different?
This right here?
I've got a three-year-old kid there.
A little one.
So this is at-grade planting?
Oh, it's at-grade. But what type of plant are you going to be, because my son's, you know, two feet tall, I hold his hand.
Sure.
Someone doesn't see him, that would make me nervous.
Yeah, that would be a consideration, that we make sure that we're not.
Something to think about.
Right, the only raised planter would be this one, and there are no side issues with that.
So everything's grade planted except for the kiddy bean in the center?
Yes, and you do have a proposed tree right here.
But it's past where you're looking for.
Yeah, we're looking for people.
So the pavers that we're seeing, that these are not going to be permeable?
These pavers are, I don't believe we showed permeable pavers here. We've gone through so many different grants, and one of them we did, I can't recall if we did or not here. You certainly could, especially in this area, if you want to.
So are they more akin to the ones in the green parking lot, or are they more akin to the ones that are on Burlington?
We're proposing these be the same pavers as Burlington.
So they match.
And the thought process is if and when you get funding for Quincy, it would be those same pavers as well?
Mr. Paul?
I think it's a great design, it'd be a great improvement. A little bit concerned about the configuration of the island area. Can I give you your point? So it seems to me that this central island should be made a little bit smaller and moved that direction a little bit. And this landscaping along the curb being extended to the north provided more of a barrier between the street and pedestrian way.
Sure.
And also that made it more of a straight line to this crosswalk where my hand is unsteady. I have not been drinking.
Ever since you agreed with Jones.
So this is a little bit more straighter, and you get the landscape going up a little bit more, so there's.
Yeah, the only concern I would have with that is, first of all, it's on grade and right at the road, so you're going to have issues with salt, et cetera, through the winter. And there's not a whole lot of, I had to point you back, there's not a whole lot of space up here, although I guess we could end it, you know, short of that, but you need at least five feet of your lawn, right?
Raised plan behind a little bit.
Yeah.
Right.
But I'll leave that to you, but that seems like something worth looking at.
Sure.
How about like those black bollards?
Bollards?
Bollards, like the metal bollards or something like that. Because I could see a car coming around and.
Yeah, and we actually did include some bollards in this plan. In our grant application, we haven't actually decided where to put them yet, but the thought process was, put then one in each of these crosswalks, and then potentially one up here as well.
I think that would sound weird. I think that makes sense.
The bollards was, yeah, I think that would, just give a sense of separation between the colors of the. Have we ever overlaid the events, like the Friends of the Fourth event, the car show, the art weekend, and things like that, to see how it drops in with the stage and some of that stuff?
Yeah, so next year's going to be, or this year, actually, is going to be a really busy year. We've got the ADA platform project, right? We potentially have commuter lot one, and we have this project, so.
I'm not worried about timing, I'm just worried about physical, okay? If we, does this plan make setting up the stage for the Friends of the Fourth event? Is it more accommodating? Can we get power resources snuck in there now so that we don't have big plywood things going across with power strips?
That has been something that the Parks and Rec Department has brought up, at least from a power perspective, how can we get that out there? I did say that we are looking at putting a bollard out there, and so that will be extending some electric out there, so we can try to incorporate some sort of ability to be able to tap into that for the staging. But Parks and Rec at this point has indicated that they think this is something they can work with for future events in this area.
And it's a great opportunity for us to kind of think of those events that have become incredibly popular and incredibly successful. Figure out how we can reduce our public works effort if we do the built environment for that, have that fourth eye.
If we have it torn up, we might as well run the power.
Even if it's just empty conduits for future.
So the bollards you're talking about would be like the ones that are on Burlington, that have the lights in them?
Exactly, the lighted bollards.
Yeah, I guess, I tend to agree with what Mr. Pollock is saying about that center, that center island, because it's all about, you know, clear sightlines, and if it's like the ones that are on Burlington, you know, people sit on them, and they're nice to sit on. And, you know, if you've got people out there waiting for the train, and they're sitting on it, I don't know if it's going to obstruct the vision of drivers coming over the tracks. I mean, it might, it's just something to consider, maybe.
Yeah, I don't think we have a sightline issue with the planter or people sitting on the planter. But if you wanted to reduce it just to, you know, make this more pedestrian and friendly through here, especially if we're adding a bollard there, we could certainly do that.
Chief, does that feel like it's going to better our situation, in your opinion?
I express my opinion, when they showed me, I think it's awesome. The cars coming over north from south.
Chief, could you step up?
I think it's a tremendous pedestrian safety concept. We get a lot of complaints that it's really dark there, too. You know, and any of these bollards that have the lights in them, I think would add pedestrian state, safety, and having that walkway that goes, that's what happens to the pedestrians, you know, even the pedestrians come and they walk past the train station. And I think that designated area is a tremendous improvement here.
And then what about snow removal? We asked the BIAD and those guys, did they rethink how to store the snow and all that good stuff and get it out there? Because I know right now, they push it to those three parking stalls right up against the fence, which are no longer going to be there, so they'll have to move it quite a ways longer.
Yeah, they've had to modify over the past year, kind of, snow removal activities, not only on the platform, but also in the central business district, based on the pavers and the materials that we used.
Are these bike, are the bike racks you're showing us, are these going to be the covered bike racks?
Covered bike racks?
No, they're, the covered ones are going to go on the other side?
Right, we were proposed, at this point, we were proposing that the bike shelter would be kind of kitty corner, so by Riverside Plumbing on the one side, and then the other place we were proposing would be here to the west of the station closer to commuter lot one. Ideally, we would like it to be closer to the inbound platform, but there's just a lack of area to be able to put it.
Yeah, I wouldn't like covered.
No, no, it'd be too intrusive.
So this will just. This will just be the U racks.
So just, I've got to revisit this one more time, the diagonal lot, the parking spots down here.
Yep.
Right above where it says sidewalk extension. Right above where it says sidewalk extension, right there.
Yep.
It seems to me that's really tight, cause you've got people parked on the left-hand side, and then it just seems like that's a bottleneck, that somebody backing out there.
Yeah, I mean, I'll...
Right there, yeah.
I'll take a look at it again right through here, but we did design it with all that in mind, and that's why it stopped here and didn't extend any further than here.
I just know that diagonal parking isn't, you know, it gets a bad rap, because people back out, and it's dark, and... So, but if you've looked at it?
Yeah, I mean, we've looked at it, and it's, there's, I mean, it's per MTCD and per, you know, all the standards that you typically have. If the village isn't real fond of it, it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't have to be there. We're just trying to find ways to get as much of that parking back as we could.
If you look at some of the historic pictures, the park diagonal way.
Yeah. Oh, I know, I know.
Also, I think the diagonal parking will actually slow traffic down, because, yeah.
That's possible.
And, I mean, you have this bump out here, right, and this here now too.
Yeah, you got the bump outs are kind of...
And that goes back to the traffic study to throttle it down, right?
Did you consider diagonal on the other side? I mean, right now, you've got the parallel.
Here, are you talking about?
I'm sorry, I think, yes, right there.
Yeah, we don't have enough space to put it there. We did look at that as well.
And what is, what is the sidewalk extension for, again, the little one?
So there's been discussions about redoing the memorial that's, I'm not sure exactly where it is, right over here.
Yeah.
Yeah. And in doing that memorial, they're gonna make it ADA compliant, I've been told. So this would be the access to...
I wouldn't jump that, yeah, but we had a meeting today, so I think it's kind of a lesson more, raise it up, maintain it, and keep it very passive and peaceful.
We'll keep it passive about that.
Yeah.
Oh, it's still under here.
Okay, yeah.
Is that why that bump out is there, just for the sidewalk?
No, this bump out was actually there anyways. So it made kind of a convenient spot to put the sidewalk, when I was asked to put the sidewalk in.
It looks like it's going over current cars in the picture, that's why.
Yeah, it does.
It's like it's a new bump out.
It is a new bump out, yes.
You need a new bump out when you go from diagonal to diagonal.
Yes.
It provides that transition.
So these two, these two spaces were accounted for in that negative three as well.
So if we didn't have to do that, we'd gain those two parking spaces back?
You're gonna have to do something to change it.
If we eliminated the diagonal parking, then you can get rid of this bump out. Getting rid of the sidewalk doesn't get rid of the bump out. The bump out's there for the transition between the diagonal parking and the parallel parking.
Oh, I see, I see. Any other questions, suggestions?
I think it would be, when we think about when we have the events, we got that plaza area space there, where a stage could turn a little bit and use the background. There's a whole bunch of them here.
It's kind of to the left of the triangle park, right there, Karen.
Okay.
And that's gonna make it a lot easier to barrier it off to, from a force protection position, right?
Absolutely. So, yeah, I mean, we could consider, I mean, we'll probably be putting a bollard somewhere in this triangle, if you want us to spare conduit.
Things like that, I think you work with public works to be smart about that and how they set that up.
Yeah, I'll talk to Ed about that before we finalize the design.
What is, on the, on the other side of the street, that white X? Right, you're right there. Yeah, what is that white X?
That's a railroad crossing, pavement margins.
Okay, so that's not denoting loss of parking space?
Nope, no.
Okay.
Why is the, why is the, I'm a big, like, symmetry guy. Why is the white sidewalk in the triangle, why isn't that the pavers, like, the two sidewalks that are surrounding it?
So...
Across from the arcade building and the train station, I'm just curious. There, yeah.
Like this?
Yeah, why isn't it the same pavers?
So this is just an exposed aggregate sidewalk, similar to how all of this is and how all this is?
Yeah, okay, I was just curious.
That's that reflective crosswalk.
It'll be the...
And these are the...
Thermoplastic stuff.
You're saying why isn't it like this?
Yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah. Within, within the park areas, it's difficult.
Okay, looks great. Thank you, Mr. Gase.
Thank you.
Next up is consideration of zoning variations from the residential bulk regulations in Table Three of Section 1045 and Non-Conforming Buildings and Structures Regulations in Section 10104C of the Berseit Zoning Ordinance, to allow a non-conforming addition to a non-conforming building at 101 lot. Ms. App, you're on again.
Yes, I am. Planet and Zoning Commission reviewed this proposed variation at their December 19th meeting. They did recommend denial of the variation. The petitioner is proposing to build an addition onto their existing home. The existing home is non-conforming on the side, the side setback, and that is the area that they are proposing to do the addition. So the existing house encroaches a little over five feet into the required side yard, so it's actually, you know, including the eaves. They're proposing to extend that wall horizontally towards, going towards their rear property line to put a two-story addition onto the back of the house. Since the house does not conform, the proposed addition also does not conform to the required seven and a half foot setback. That addition will not have eaves, so the total encroachment won't be as large as the existing encroachment is. So it'll be about four and three-quarters feet off of the side lot line, as opposed to the required seven and a half. So in their discussions, the petitioner expressed that there was a need for them to be able to accommodate an in-law suite for their mother-in-law, and that if they have to bring in the setback and offset that addition, it's shrinking the amount of space that they have and starts to put that private space very exposed to the more public spaces of the first floor. And then it kind of disrupts the floor plan and the view into the backyard, and they didn't want that view to be disrupted. So their preference would be for them to just be able to extend that wall back. And as the Planet and Zoning Commission reviewed the materials that were provided and their explanation, they ultimately decided that they did not meet the standards for variation. They felt that there was probably other ways that the addition could be, or their ideas could be handled and accommodated with different layouts that would meet the setback requirements, that this was more of a, what's the word I'm looking for? More of an inconvenience, I think is the word we're looking for here, rather than a particular hardship or practical difficulty as required by our standards. They also felt that this wasn't necessarily a unique situation. There are a lot of non-conforming homes out there. Our zoning code was written in such a way to allow people to do additions and invest in their non-conforming homes without having to go through the variance process, but your addition does need to meet the setback if the existing house doesn't, or it can be a second-story addition. So if you have a house that encroaches into the side yard, you are allowed to vertically extend those walls by putting up a second-story addition. You're just not allowed to go closer to the property line with that addition. So there are accommodations built into our code to allow people to be able to expand their existing houses in a way that still preserves some of the zoning on the lot. So ultimately, they did recommend denial. It was a unanimous vote of denial. So the board can either make a motion to concur with the Planet and Zoning Commission's recommendation to deny the proposed variation, or if the board disagrees with the Planet and Zoning Commission's recommendation, they can direct staff to draft an ordinance approving the proposed variation for you to consider at your next board meeting. So you have the findings of fact, you have a copy of the plans that they provided, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. The petitioner apparently decided not to come tonight, but I have not heard that they are withdrawing their petition, so I think they're just kind of waiting to see if there's any interest in further considering it, or if this is a no-go.
Comments?
Just to clarify, you said that if you had a non-conforming, we're allowing them currently to go vertically?
They already are a two-story house, but like technically, if you had, you know, like a bungalow or something like that, and you wanted to put a full two-story addition, you'd be able to vertically extend that wall, provided your eaves, et cetera, aren't gonna further encroach than they already do. And you could put an addition on the back that meets all of the setbacks, but if you're going to put an addition that doesn't meet the setbacks, then you do have to go through the variance process.
So in this case, a workable solution would be for them to move it inboard three feet?
Yes, and that's what they don't want to do, because they said it, it ruins the floor plan, reduces the size of the room. There's, they wanna kind of maintain, on their other side of the house, they have kind of like a sunroom, living room area, it's got a lot of windows, and they wanna be able to preserve that view and still provide the backdoor entry, and then have this in-law suite out there, so...
How much do people pay for a variation process?
It's a $500 fee.
I'll wait to see if anybody else has anything to say before I say what I have to say. Any other comments?
I always toss around about this one, because when we don't grant variances about things like this, it deters people from adapting or reusing homes, or could, and then we get tear downs, which then all start to look alike, which is kind of what everybody doesn't want, we're deciding to come. So it's a challenging thing. This one being on the backside, with plausible, I'm assuming that, because he feels that it was a plausible option to reconfigure it, to make it stay within the proper accurate termage of the way our code's written right now. I can kind of understand why it went six and out.
I mean, my thought about this is, I think this was obviously not going to be approved. And I think that petitioners need to be, since they're spending $500, they need to understand that this is a steep hill to climb when asking for a variation, and that, you know, personal preference or inconvenience is not going to meet the standards. I mean, I agree with what Mr. Lumston just said, but, I mean, the variation process is supposed to be a pretty high bar. And, and I think also, if you expect to get a variation, you probably should come to the meeting where it's being discussed, so that you can answer questions if the trustees have them. So I just say that for potential future petitioners who might be interested in something like this. They need to listen to staff, cause I'm quite sure that you have explained to them exactly what I just said. Because it ends up being a waste of their time and money, and of our staff's time and money, and of our commission's time. So just a public relations comment. Mr. Pollak?
I would like to pick up on that. I agree with everything you said, but I have to add that, that I'll be candid here.
I think this board, not this particular board's, but the Board of Trustees' actions on other variations in the past has hamstrung our staff from being able to do that, because quite frankly, we have granted variations that were not justifiable. And when that happens, people...
Absolutely.
Take it, you know, they said, "Well, gosh, that guy got that garage variation, and there's no hardship there, so maybe they'll grant mine." And staff can say anything they want, but the history is what matters. And when staff is able to say, "Well, look, they denied this, this, and this," then they're gonna deny yours most likely, so I just had to take advantage of the opportunity to make that point.
So would anyone like to make a motion?
Obviously, I disagree with Doug and Alan, but we all know that, so I need you to add it, so...
Okay, so I would ask for a motion, a second, to concur with the Planet and Zoning Commission's recommendations to deny the proposed variation from the four regulations. By Mr. Gisa.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pollak. Please call the roll.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Gisa.
Aye.
Trustee Lumston.
Aye.
Trustee Allen.
Aye.
Trustee Seton.
Aye.
Trustee Keers.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. App. Any new business? We do have need for an executive session to discuss the sale of village property. Without it, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn, not to reconvene, no final action will be taken. Motion by Mr. Lumston.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gisa. Please call the roll.
Trustee Allen.
Aye.
Trustee Gisa.
Aye.
Trustee Lumston.
Aye.
Trustee Allen.
Aye.
Trustee Seton.
Aye.
Trustee Keers.
Aye.
Motion passes, meeting's adjourned. Thank you, good night.